There more?
Here.
And I'd like to welcome everyone out tonight. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're on to item 3.0, Approval of Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please.
Butcher?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to item 4.0, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please.
Butcher?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we are on to item 5.0, Board Update. And would you like to start, David?
Just welcome the kids back to school. I know you guys were looking forward to it all summer long. So welcome all of you guys back to school. And congratulations to all of you who are interested in being part of this process. Really do appreciate that. Your input is greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Tammy?
I just want to thank Peter for allowing the sissy soccer and bringing that with which and what that is, is it's our police and our city police and our sheriff's office that get together and hold soccer camps and once a week at in our some of our parks around town. And Evans was one that we were able to have one out thanks to Peter being receptive to it being here in our district and Brett working to for the facilities and Jack making sure that all summer that park was kept up. So I want to thank all three of you for allowing that. I went to their last session and it was it was such an amazing event. And it was so good to see those kids and the officers out there. And students from our high schools came from the soccer teams that were out there mentoring them. So it was so good. So thank you all very much for allowing that to happen here.
As specifically David Pratt helped organize that. And now there were teachers, coaches, parents out there and students going out there helping kids who, you know, some of which never played soccer, to learn how to be soccer, be a team, be part of the community. So congratulations to them. A lot of this information, surprisingly enough, was in the New Falcon Herald. And I read those articles in there and and, you know, learned what a success that program was. We knew it was starting in the beginning of the summer, but to hear what a success it had been was was very good to hear. I wanted to say to Jack's whole team, thank you so much for all that work that you guys have been doing at the various schools over the weekend. They're the operations guys and they're the ones fixing facilities, upgrading facilities, things like that. So, you know, for that, that was, you know, a pretty tremendous effort for the short time, you know, that we have a summer here. When I was a kid, it was three months long, but don't want to hurt anybody's feelings. But for two, you know, for two months, they've been working pretty hard getting this stuff going. And schools are starting to take shape. And I welcome all the kids from everywhere back, you know, to the schools and the staff. And I remind the public out there to drive safely and watch out for the kids.
When Director Graham was in school, he also walked to school in the snow, five miles uphill both ways. So that's what it is. But and on a serious note, the district put on a, we got, we got all the staff and all the employees of the entire district together for a team building event before to kick off the school year. It was an amazing event. And it's nice to see everybody together dreaming big with a good vision for our district and our community and pulling our community together. That was well done, Peter, Matt. There's tons of people involved in putting it on. Marie, Tammy, thanks for representing the board so well. Appreciate what we did. And I think it was very healthy for everybody. Thanks.
And tonight for our fantastic 49, we actually held it in a different room. So those of you who were over there don't know what we were doing necessarily. And we were meeting with our Student Board of Representatives and many of them, because this will be one of the few meetings where we don't have students present, needed to get to their own back to school nights and events at their own schools and get cracking on some of the homework they've already been assigned. But we also have several students who've stayed to watch at least a portion of this first meeting. So if you wouldn't mind standing just for a second, so the folks here who you will be able to be asking questions of as you attend meetings will be here. I want to thank you all right now for your service to our district. They are also part time unpaid volunteers on our behalf. So thank you so much for coming tonight and for being willing to be a part of that process this year. I also want to just remind everyone, as we're looking forward, we have three opportunities to come here about the mill levy override proposal we're considering putting on the ballot. We'll be voting as a board to make a determination on that on April 20 or on, sorry, August 24. But we have meetings on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday of next week at seven o'clock. I believe the first one's at Vista, second one is Sand Creek, and third is Falcon High, correct? From seven to eight thirty, you can come hear what we're planning on doing and why and how we'll have a way to help support our schools with no tax rate increase. And we need help getting that word out and getting people to come hear about it and give us their opinions so we can make sure that what we vote on on the 24th reflects our community. So please help spread the word on those as well. The board gets an information item to help us grow professionally at each meeting. And this month is Robert's Rules of Order motion details to help us actually do the technical stuff correctly. And I just want to remind everyone to please make sure you fill out your board evaluation form this meeting as well. And thank you to everyone who's helped to get this school year off to an awesome start. I know we have a ton of things going on in the district already. And so now it's time for Chief Officer update.
Yeah, I'd like to give kudos to my director of facilities as well as this entire team because, you know, they were really the ones and as well as even some of the contractors, local contractors that really assisted us in pulling off a couple of, as I told the guys, pulling a rabbit out of a hat in one community called the Falcon Legacy Campus. It was quite fun doing that. And then all of a sudden, we thought we were in good shape. And then Mother Nature decided to give us a hailstorm that we're dealing with right now as well. So it's fun to be back into school. It was a fun summer, but I do want to thank them for their efforts this summer.
Real quick, Jack, how much damage did the hailstorm cause for schools?
It's going to be extensive because a lot of our HVAC units were in essence pummeled, let alone all the windows that were broken at Creekside. Success Center, all the windows on the south side are all basically, it looks like somebody just took a pellet gun and shot all.
We have a strategic commitment to create firm foundations for every student. And we do that through our emphasis on primary literacy and the rest of the elementary curriculum. And we were very excited to see, not only did we have great end of year results on our DIBELS assessment, which is a literacy assessment, but that carried over even into the science assessment. We just, we were just allowed to begin speaking publicly about our science results, which went up year over year. And so we're going to be excited to host the Lieutenant Governor of Colorado, as well as the Educational Specialist from Senator Michael Bennett's office. They're both going to be here in the next month, just to come and learn about what we're doing, what we're doing well. And so that's very exciting when we think about our elementary program and our secondary program, where we are, we are committed to launch every student to success, whether that is in further study as a college student or serving in our military, leading a family, joining workforce. We're, we're not as particular about what form of success our students have, but we want to make sure they're prepared to be successful. And one of the ways we measure that is have they mastered the content? The ACT is a great indicator of that. And we're about to transition as a state and as a district to the PSAT and the SAT as our secondary standardized assessments. So in the last year that our students take the ACT, we had two schools set their high watermark. Every single district high school had an improved score year over year. And our average was the hot was the highest that it's been. So we really see that the work of our students and teachers is paying off in results at elementary and secondary. So that's a great way to jump into the new year. We'll give you a lot more detail about that. But since we got to start talking about it today, and there's a little bit of news about it today, I just wanted to share with you that we're grateful for where we're going.
Okay, thank you. And did Brett give anybody anything to add from his perspective, or are we covered now?
Just that he works with two great guys.
Okay, and so now we have, our next item on the agenda is open forum, and we have one speaker. So open forum statement, we read each time. "We appreciate and welcome comments on school operations and programs in District 49 as part of tonight's open forum. Please speak into the microphone and state your name before beginning. We ask that your comments be made in a respectful and orderly manner. Personal complaints against any individual connected with the school system are prohibited. Follow up action items may be assigned to the appropriate chief officer depending on the nature of the comments. In accordance with board policy BEDH, public participation is limited to three minutes per person. Thank you for participating in our open forum. It is a practice of the board to withhold any board comment or direction to the chiefs until after all who have signed up for open forum have had a chance to speak. I would also like to make you aware of our stakeholder grievance process. This process can be initiated by anyone in our D49 community and guides the community member through the correct people to help resolve their concern, including as a final step, the opportunity to formally appeal to the board. We encourage you to utilize this process as many have successfully resolved their concerns this way." And our speaker is Ellen Duckers.
Hi, it's me again, Ellen Duckers. I've been a parent, patron, and grandparent in the district for the last 28 years. Been coming to every board meeting. And there are some people that don't notice. My granddaughter is in kindergarten now and I cried. She is loving it, just loving it. And I didn't know that do cheerleading there. She's going to love that too. Something I just heard on the news, a college in Houston, a child has been advocating for everybody's life matters, which it does. It's not just the black, the Oriental, the Germans, the who knows, whatever. And it does matter. But he got suspended 50 days because he's supporting that everybody's life matters. What's wrong with these people? We're not going to get that stupid in our district, are we? I know, you guys are much better. I know. And I love you guys. You know that. But I mean, I find that very ridiculous to suspend a student for 50 days for advertising everybody's life matters. And it does.
Okay, and we are now on to our action items. So we're on to item 7.01, Reauthorization of the Pike's Peak Board of Cooperative Ed Service Contracts. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the Pike's Peak Annual BOCs contracts in item 7.01 as recommended by the administration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? These contracts are just annual contracts that provide some of the special education services for our students and extra services that we need to contract out for. Any further discussion? Hearing none of vote, please.
Butcher?
Yes.
Graham?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to 7.02, Action on the First Amendment to the Site Lease for Banning Lewis Ranch Academy.
I move to approve the First Amendment to site lease between District 49 and Banning Lewis Ranch Academy Building Corp., LLC as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? This is just kind of clearing up some contract language and taking two site leases and combining them into one single document, which makes it a little easier to administer. So with that, can we have a vote, please?
Butcher? Graham?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to 7.03, Policy Action.
I move to approve the policies and regulations in item 7.03 as recommended by the administration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please.
Butcher?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to item 7.04, Some Additional Policy Review.
I move to, after review and discussion, I move to approve the 16 policies in item 7.04.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? These are all technical fixes in general, just some adjustments to mild language, nothing major. But these were all reviewed at our last work session as well. So with that, can we have a vote, please?
Butcher?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to item 7.05, Adoption of a Statement for Reduction in Program.
I move to approve the attached statement of reduction in program.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please.
Butcher?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to item 7.06, Approval of Food Service Contract for Power Technical Early College.
I move to approve the contract between Falcon School District Nutrition Department and Power Technical Early College.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please.
Butcher?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to item 7.07, School Readiness Assessment Waivers.
I move to approve Rocky Mountain Classical Academy and Imagine Classical Academy's proposed waiver request of CSS
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? This is not allowing these schools to not look at school readiness. This is acknowledging that as charter schools, they have a separate process they already have in place to meet the same goal. So with that, can we have a vote, please?
Butcher?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to item 7.08, Board Representative for the Casby Delegate Assembly.
I move to appoint Marie Livia Wright as the board representative to serve as a delegate at Casby's Delegate Assembly.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so then with that, may we have a vote, please?
Butcher?
Definitely.
Graham?
Absolutely.
Harold?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Actually, Marie, you are very good at it and you do enjoy it, so don't deny it. I mean, you are good at it. And you've brought, you've done a very good job of pushing some policies forward at Casby that need to be pushed forward. And we appreciate it.
And so with that, we're on to 8.0, Information Items. These are just items that are generally for us to be able to review and look at. This time, we have some process improvement policies. So there was, again, just some technical things for us to look at in terms of language. Did anyone have any questions on any of those on 8.01? And we did have the legal review on 8.01C, correct, the religion in the curriculum? I think that was the one that Mr. Miller was going to look at for us and make sure it was really consistent with what we do.
Correct.
Okay. Then we'll move those forward, please, for action at the next meeting. And we're on to item 9.01, The Peak Partners Report. I know.
Excuse me, Matt, is this TV going to be turned on? Okay. It's actually the slides from the screen, so we don't have to crane our necks too much.
This is when you realize how important Donna is to our everyday lives and how she helps us to look good.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Marie Johnson. I'm with my partner, Matt Barrett. And you're going to watch a clip of our ending of our Peak Partners Leadership Academy, which ran from January to March. And then we'll give you a briefing on some of our findings. So a little bit of background, we had 14 participants, seven sessions. The front on a beach session, we presented district-wide information from many of the leaders and administrators in the district. And then the second half, we talked about leadership. So in tonight's 15 minutes, Matt's going to give you an overview of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. I'll walk you through what we planned for the second half and then how we're going to connect what we're doing in PPLA to our community of volunteers.
As you mentioned, I'll walk you through, make sure this works. Perfect. So I'll walk you through the SWOT analysis. I'm not going to take the time to read all the slides. I know you've got them and you can look at them with me. Of it here essentially is class that came out, they were actively involved. I know some of the directors were there and witnessed the relentless questioning and continual curious, I mean, just the curious minds that were part of this. They wanted to learn. They came with a sincere, learn more about the district. So I thought that was a great strength that we had. We've already got people getting engaged and more people asking, where can I get engaged? And as we match up their skill set with opportunities, I think that that will prove to be a great benefit out of this program. One of the biggest things was meeting the District 49 personnel. And I would put in that as well, meeting the directors that were able to attend the different meetings. As you know, this town is built on relationships. And through relationships come trust. And I think the bottom line is, we saw some pretty significant skeptics come into this program that walked out of the program trusting the district at a much greater level than they, than I ever would have thought possible. And I think than they ever thought would have been possible as well. So I chalk that up as being probably the greatest success that came out of this. The weaknesses, you know, it was a new program. We didn't have any tradition. And as a result, there was really no momentum. So we're taking this, this big idea and how do we get it moving? And, you know, I think that was really probably where the largest part of that came from. You know, in the beginning, that essentially turned into was a little bit hard to get the community, their mind into what this program would look like, what it was going to deliver. And as a result, applications to join the group were maybe a little bit tentative at first. I think, as we'll talk about here in a moment, though, I think we'll see that turn into some opportunities for us. So within the opportunities, you know, we now have some momentum. We now have, you know, some tradition to build off of. And so as a result, I feel pretty strongly that we're going to have a equal quality. I don't know that you can outdo the quality of individuals we had in the last group, but more quality individuals attending this next time. And in addition to that, we'll be able to focus in the impact that this group is going to have. Now that we've been through it one time, we'll be able to gain what we've learned and project that into the future and have some better opportunities there as well. On the threat side of things, you know, the threats, I'm going to say are fairly common sense. As you kind of look through those, participants really have three key resources that they can give to the district. They have their time, their talent, and their treasure. We're asking for a lot of their time. We're asking for a lot of their talent. And the one thing that we're not asking for is their treasure, which actually kind of works into the idea of without any skin in the game, are they invested in it? And how can we get them to give their, their time and their talent at an even greater level without having some skin in the game? without having some skin in the game? So these are kind of the things that Jennifer and I are talking about, and how do we capitalize on these sorts of things? I do think that we can mitigate those threats very effectively. And as we'll show you what next year is going to look like here in a moment, you'll actually see that we're going to ask for and require an even greater give of their time, which will translate into their talent as well. So the recommendations out of this, you know, I definitely would say let's chalk year one up to a successful start of the program. I think that we had some good marked successes, some things to build on. And as I mentioned, we really just got the program off the ground, and I think we'll be able to build on this foundation we've set. You know, we're definitely going to make some tweaks from our experiences. We've learned a lot through this, things that we didn't need. In fact, things that I personally specifically said they'll never want that. All of a sudden, the whole group came back at the end and said, no, that's exactly what I want. So we're learning as we go through this as well. We'll be able to, moving forward, we'll be able to market, we'll be able to promote, and we'll really be able to harness this energy to grow the program size and the effect that it has. And then really, the next big thing is we're just getting ready to launch PPLA version two, the second year of this. So what that looks like is we'll begin this again in winter of 2017. Go January through March. We found that that timeframe within the calendar works best for the various schedules that we have. We'll do the same seven in-class sessions. But one of the big pieces of feedback, and the thing that I said, no one's ever going to want to do this, and they said they did, was more out-of-class sessions. And so we're actually going to take the in-class sessions, and we'll talk about that here. The biggest thing is the in-class sessions. We were trying to do our best to juggle between this leadership bootcamp concept that you heard about and District 49 information. And it was a rough transition sometimes, going from talking about human resources or technology in District 49 or facilities of District 49, shift gears, and then we're all of a sudden talking about, you know, how do you get motivated intrinsically and extrinsically? It was just a weird transition for us. So Jennifer came up with a great idea, which I completely agree with. We'll do some online sessions outside of class, using some of the assets already in place, Schoology, for example, and be able to facilitate some leadership training that way. So I think those are the kind of the big takeaways from it all. And really, the main change that you'll see in facilitating of it will be adding the second portion of it. So with that, I'm going to step aside and transition over to Jennifer, who's going to talk to you about what it looks like coming into the second half of this year.
We're fascinated by our learnings. We're also fascinated by some assumptions we made. We assumed if folks were involved in the community, they knew about the community. And we certainly are learning from that because someone's on PTA or even sometimes on DAC or SAC, that they know how the district runs. So we've certainly learned some lessons about the recruitment process. The fascinating part, we've had other districts wanting to come and join us, and Peter said I could with a small fee. Oh, is that what you said? We've had other school districts interested in what we're doing, and right now, we're just kind of holding to our own district. This is my 25th year in the district volunteering and working, and it's fascinating to hear community and their different assessments of what we do and how we do it, their perceptions of their reality. And we are working hard to build a foundation of community advocates that will be with us for as long as we, as long as they're willing to give us time. Community advocates that will help communicate with their neighbors, community advocates that will help champion what we're doing, community advocates that will help us celebrate those young people that were here today, that are part of the youth portion of school board. So what we're hoping to do in these next sessions is first half, we'll still do community, listening to what the district does, but we think we're going to take our leadership piece online. If we're calling this a leadership academy, there was much that we had. We had three ring binders each week laid out. There's much that they wanted to know about leadership, but there was so much they wanted to know about how the district runs that we often ran out of time. So we're going to move it to online, allow a continuous communication between the participants and Matt and I. And that should give us a better feel for what they're thinking and feeling and wanting to know more of. This is that our goal in building these advocates, these thought leaders, is to help them help us better communicate. And some time ago, I think it was probably two or three years ago, we talked about, maybe four years ago, volunteers in neighborhood or initiating neighborhood education. What if we got community volunteers to help us get the word out? My children are all gone, and I was one of the great examples of, I never hear from the district until this time for a vote. So our goal was to go find those folks that are retired, that are interested, but haven't had a connection so that we can, in fact, have them help Matt and his team, Matt Meister and his team, put the word out when there's a critical need to do so. We're hoping for some focus groups. We're hoping for, just as we're doing with the youth, some feedback on what's working, what do we need to know more about? What is it that we can help community learn more about? And then putting in place some long-term plans. Continuous improvement is the process. We're heading into our second version or second of this Leadership Academy, and we're hoping to continue to learn from them as much as they have learned, we hope, from us. We are one district, but we are certainly going to look at making sure representation from every zone is a part of the process. I'm out in Falcon Zone with Julia Rourke, Dr. Rourke, and we are certainly looking at how do we build those links to, from zone to zone, so that we all understand that what one zone may need may not be exactly what another zone will lead. But if we've got thought leaders contributing and helping us understand that, we think we'll go a whole lot further. Continuous improvement certainly is a part of these neighborhood teams, and we're hoping that these teams will give us an opportunity to see through the eyes of our community as opposed to just our own eyes. They opened their eyes on some things, and we're hoping to continue that process. We're going to be asking board members, we're going to ask zone leaders, we're going to ask central office to help identify those potential thought leaders that may be interested in participating in what now becomes a 14-session Leadership Academy. We started out with seven. We moved to 14. The other seven will be online. Questions?
I'm not sure if I'm directing. Jennifer, Matt, great job. I sat through some of those. These guys did a good job. Great first year. But the question I have is, we have our first academy came through, and this may be directed back to the chief says, okay, they've graduated from Pike's Peak Leadership, Pike's Peak, I'm sorry, I've mixed up my Leadership Academies. They've graduated. What next? What are we doing to engage them and give them, allow them to keep moving forward? Because obviously, there's an interest there.
So we've got a superstar. She's a colleague of mine. She's already involved with DAC. She's involving with PTA. She's involved. Help me out, Tammy. I know she's Brittany, Brittany McVicker, future board member, and her children aren't even in school yet. So we've got some rising examples of community members that are stepping up to the plate. We did try to present during the seven weeks a litany or cafeteria plan of activities that we'd like them to get involved in. This second iteration, we're going to put that on the front end and see if we can't get some commitment process. And it may not be a long-term commitment like a board member, but it may be coming to a board meeting. In fact, Matt and I are talking about inviting, probably in our February session, inviting the 20 potential new Leadership Academy participants to come to a board meeting. We think we'll do better at getting them to sign on earlier. We're putting lots in front of them. And I said, and we have three that are actively involved. We're hoping to get a bigger percentage this next go-round.
Or the other thing to answer your question, as we're progressing towards this potential ballot initiative, lots of information needs to be disseminated throughout the community. And so one of the things that we've targeted, and we've already started reaching out them individually and saying, would you be willing to host a neighborhood group meeting? Would you be willing to participate in something along those lines? And, you know, summertime, and I haven't gotten 100% responses back yet, but those that I have gotten back have been favorable. Yeah, they could be very interested in that. So I think that's kind of in the short-term, quick ramp up to, towards November. There might be some opportunities there. There will be opportunities there. Long-term, you know, maybe towards the point of Brittany's case, you know, that's kind of a long, ongoing, you know, opportunity. And I think that those opportunities will come out of it as well. So we're definitely in line with engaging them in some way moving forward. At this point, I don't know if we have the process completely refined, but we're working on that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, kind of.
The other thing that surprised us, they were interested in all of the connections of what's going on in the community. So we provided links to the chamber, links to what's going on in our schools. We're attempting to put in front of them as many opportunities for them to self-select where their passions are. Given a choice, we're probably going to assign them, but we were working to let them self-select so that they can, in fact, work their way into the fabric of the district. Even though we believe some of them were informed, they were just not as integrated into the fabric that I think some of us thought they might be. So that's our goal, to get them inside. And again, we think coming to a board meeting. One of the requests they had was, why aren't we meeting in schools? So we will shift our gears and not just meet at Creekside or here at the board office, but in fact, get them into some of our schools to see what goes on within our buildings.
So as you're recruiting for the next set, you know, this was in part because we really, we need to grow those community connections. And looking forward to, we also need to grow the pool of people who understand the district well enough to be able to start stepping up into some of the leadership roles, including board roles. And we're moving into a director district system. We're transitioning over the next two elections in that. So we need to start developing some of that pool as well. And so I don't know if that can be a consideration as you're starting to recruit people, is looking at what director districts will be on the next ballot in the next year and a half and start seeing what people who live in those areas may be interested in engaging. You won't know whether they'd be interested in being board candidates necessarily, but at least concentration on people who are residents within those areas that we know we're going to need representation. Because when we're running well as a board, there aren't very many people who step up and say, you know, people tend to step up when they think there's something that needs to be fixed. And then all of a sudden, we've got like eight people running for two spots, right? When things are going really well, we don't even need to run a ballot because we're lucky to get two names on the ballot, which is what happened with John and I the last time. So we both ran unopposed. So, and as we look at that, and we have someone term limited, so we know there's going to be at least one seat that has to be filled. We need to be looking at how we grow that potential. So we'll see. We'll talk about that later. We've got a year, we've got another whole, we've got a full year before we have to think about that piece. But starting to grow that pool, because you're also not necessarily just talking about the next election cycle. It might be someone we, who, as they get connected to the district three or four years from now, is interested in running. But a part of our goal, I think, in this was to start to develop that pool of people who have some knowledge and understanding so that we could get better quality long-term serving on the board. So that's
And many of them have committed to help mentor and coach the next class. So we're hoping to keep them integrated with with the new class because their commitment is to see what they can do to help. And yes, long-term, we've got short-term and long-term that we're looking at, what their commitments are going to be time-wise. And we're hoping that's going to be the gauge in our continuous improvement process. So we'll look to see from year to year what they're, what they've ramped up to decide to participate in the district.
Yeah, so maybe working with zone leaders to figure out some of those director district pieces. Because, you know, if you really stink, like Brittany McVicker, I believe, lives in my director district, so I got three more years before she can run. So we'll keep her engaged that long, and she'll probably run for my seat then, and I won't have to worry about finding someone to take my seat. Thank you, Brittany. But we have, you know, other positions that we will need, folks. So helping us kind of grow in the order of what we're going to have to fill, I think, would be helpful. Yeah, trying to plan far enough ahead that we keep this train rolling on the right tracks.
You're absolutely right. That's one of the things that I would maybe ask for continued partnership with the directors and the chiefs as well. You know, our recruitment primarily revolved around who are the businesses in the area. You saw names in the lower third up there, Kent Credit Union, Bryan Construction. We had a couple of people from North Star Bank as well. And so already, community-minded organizations being involved. And so that's a great place for us to go talk to people. But that doesn't reach all of the people, of the roughly 60% of the people who aren't directly affiliated with the district, meaning don't work here, don't have kids here. That's a large trying to reach. And short of just going door-to-door, knocking on doors and saying, would you like to sign up? The easiest way to get into there is going to be, you know, I guess, names and who do you know that might be a great partner for this? So we'd love to partner with you on that, and we'll do all the legwork if you just coordinate, however that works. Can I make an ask to the board in the middle of this presentation? I guess I just did.
You can. And leaders know leaders, which is one of the things we now have, in addition to executives and Jennifer and Matthew and the people that we had a year ago, we also now have 14 people that know a lot about our district and would be willing to make the introduction. And so we're very pleased about this first year. We recognize it's our first year. We know there's a lot of expansion to come, but well done. Thank you all very much for the work you put into it.
Okay, so we are now on to item 9.02, the application timeline for Liberty Tree Classical Academy, and that's Mr. Franco.
Good evening. Andy Franco, I can ex-zone leader. Tonight, I'm just here to discuss the application timeline for potential applicant Liberty Tree Classical Academy. I think we're done with next week's meeting as well, so. Find that. There we go. Okay. So in your board pack, you'll see this flow chart that's been provided to the group titling themselves Liberty Tree Classical Academy. And to give some perspective on this, we, as a district, do have a waiver on file with the state to accept and review applications during a spring cycle. This application came to us through conversation and then through a more of a commitment after our application letter of intent or intent to apply deadline occurred this past cycle. So why it's coming to you as a board tonight is to take a look at the deadlines that have been proposed to their board and to let you know that this is a very rigorous application timeline for them to meet. And we've, I've addressed that with this group, and they're well aware of that. The reason that they would like to be pursuing this application and applying at this point, pre-cycle, if you will, is that they are intending to be grant-eligible for the Colorado Charter School Program grant, which would allow them startup funds for their school if they were approved. So because of that cycle, that starts now. They're actually in the bootcamp, I think, next week is when that begins. And so they need to be in the application process with a district in order to be eligible for that grant. So I've spoken with this group on a few occasions. They seem very motivated, but they will have to hit some very tight deadlines in order to produce for us what we need in order to bring an application forward to the board that we would recommend from the administration for any type of approval. So with that, I don't want to dig in too deep. It's pretty self-explanatory, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have about that process.
Do they have a location?
A general location. They don't have a site. So facility is part of that problem to be solved. They're looking out east, and in terms of general location, they're talking Eastonville and Judge Orr Road area.
So what do you need from us at this point? Is this just to let us know that you're, this process will be going on and this is coming? Or did you need something more formal from the board at this point?
No requests to the board at this point. Right now, I just want to provide the information so that you're aware there is an applicant out there that it is, you know, pre spring cycle review process, if you will. We're not intending to ensure that they hit all these deadlines. We're intending that they're aware that these are the deadlines that they would need to hit. So that being said, if they don't, that doesn't mean that they can't apply to the district. Of course, what it means is that they could come back with their full application at another time or during the spring cycle of this coming year. So really, the information's there again for you to So really, the, the, the information's there again for you to have to understand that we're in discussions with this group and really this process was developed so that they could be eligible for the startup grant.
Anyone need any further clarification? Okay, thank you very much. So we're just making sure this is really transparent to everyone as they're walking through.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, and so now we are in item 9.03, election planning. Mr. Meister.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Matt Meister, Director of Communications. I have a couple of things to do in my, what has been a, an update every meeting for you guys on what we've been doing. Tomorrow, today and tomorrow, every mailbox in the district is receiving one of these, what you see up there, which does have notification about the building our future community program, the four main points, the upcoming community information nights that we have scheduled for next week, as Marie mentioned earlier. And also on the back, some frequently asked questions about the building our future community plan and a call to action to get more information right now on d49.org/ourfuture. So I wanted to make you aware of that. And then also as part of this, but a bigger initiative, you have in front of you tonight, the first edition of the District 49 Dispatch, which is a quarterly newspaper that my department is going to do. And we have committed to the first year to deliver this via mail to every mailbox in the district. So this in a roundabout way is part of election planning, but it's more of a long-term vision to, to speak directly to that 60% of residents that Mr. Barrett mentioned in the last presentation. So it will be 10 pages. Normally, this one is eight due to just rolling it out for the first time, but we do have advertiser support in this paper. So we want to thank them. That will continue to grow and they offset the cost of this newspaper. So you all have a copy of that and a fun reading to you. And lastly, I want to make you aware of, earlier this week, we did a town hall with residents in District 49 and we talked for about 52 minutes with members of our community who called in and asked questions about the plan after listening to slash watching our overview video. And so earlier this afternoon, I put together, it's about two minutes long, but I thought for those of you that weren't able to listen to it, that it would be good just to give you an idea of what kind of things we were talking about and a little bit about how that went. So I'm going to play that for you now. I think.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Traditional high schools?
One of the things that is because they're not the same. They were both at different times and they had different facilities.
I'm Karen. How are you?
You're great. Thank you very much.
I have a senior at the student high school right now and my son is fantastic. And what is the timeframe for all the additions and, and everything that's going to be going on at the high school?
Hi, what's the time coming first? I do think the teachers deserve competitive salaries. Everyone on this call wants a competitive salary in whatever business or work that they do. They have a very tough job and I think they deserve those.
Thank you very much, Matt. My question is, I've lived out in the Falcon area for about 15 years. And I was curious, what is the district doing to, I guess, demand anything of the developers that continue to add homes and contribute to the, the population?
Hello, Matt. This is Mary May. I'm president of the Falcon Teachers Association.
Sir, I'm retired. I am moved. I retired for caution and I was moved that this was a wonderful district and now I'm like living here. And I'm just wondering, what, what is motivating factor for, for folks like me, who are retired, don't have kids in school, to actively vote for this campaign and let folks look for it?
So you can see that we had a cross-section of our community that participated in this, that chose to engage and interact with us. And I think those of us that, that were participating that night, kind of hosting the town hall, if you will, you know, just felt the energy that that brings to the table and allowing people to interact with us from the comfort of their own home and having a video component to it. So we really saw a lot of value in that. And we plan on doing more of those in the future as well as part of our larger community engagement efforts. So we'll include that whole recording on a webpage that we will build tomorrow morning. And we'll pass that out to our staff and to our families in an email that we send out tomorrow that not only points them to that discussion, but is another avenue to invite them to our community information nights next week. So that's what we've been doing and kind of where we are right now. So have any questions? Comments?
I got the phone call and put it on speaker while I was doing things around my house. And I just have to say, you guys did a great job. So thank you for doing that and it was wonderful. It was great.
Yeah, I agree. It was a really neat conversation.
I may have missed it, but how are you delivering this to our constituents? How is it?
Mail.
By mail? Cool.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna put it in.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, we're gonna put it in every mailbox.
Have the kids just pick it up on the way in school?
Well, we thought about that as they were walking home from school, just give them a view and they could chuck it into the, you know, into the driveways. But we thought it more systematically would probably be better. But I thi, I think it's important to do that. I think through that newspaper, as we get into the third or fourth quarter of it, for the first year, we'll probably engage the community with a poll that we'll host on our website and try to gauge, you know, if we best as much in that mail delivery and put these in certain, you know, well-traveled locations in the community, you know, would they commit to picking it up kind of thing? That's something that will feel out along the way. But, you know, it, it's important to reach that 60%. Dedicated their children or no longer have students in our schools or don't yet have students in our schools. And this is a really good way to do that. Thank you.
I really thought I was special when you called and said, hey, this is my Meister. And then it was almost like a robocall.
It was like a robocall. It was a robocall. Right? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so our next item is 9.04, which is the district resolutions for when you guys send me to the delegate assembly. About last time, Casby has kind of completely redone their stuff, which means that they basically took out all of those things we worked so hard to get in and have come down to like a two-page document that are their standing resolutions. And now we'll have annual resolutions each year that get added to that. So as we're looking back, we need to decide what we think is worth pushing forward and trying to put back in, if anything, from the five we've had in the past, as well as anything new we might want to contribute. So that's both from the board and we were hoping for feedback from chiefs as well. Does anybody have anything to start that conversation? I had.
We just don't have any feel for how it's going to work now to, so we can send you up with, to get some of these back on there and see what they do year to year. It'll be interesting.
I had one idea, a couple of ideas, but the first one was one, and Mr. Butcher has talked about it a little in the past as well. And that is, as we're looking at funding, we know that hitting some big ball, like continuing to rail on the negative factor is kind of pointless. Some of the other things that have been, Casby Valley Wicks really aren't going to move anything forward in legislature. But we have talked about the impact of marijuana and medical marijuana and the fact that there is misperception, that there's much, if any, money coming into education from that. But I believe there's also a pool of marijuana tax money still sitting that can be put into the general fund by the legislature for them to use however they wish. And so I'm wondering, I don't know the technical terms for all of those pieces, but whether it would be worth proposing a resolution that that money that is not yet dedicated be dedicated to covering high-needs special education reimbursement to increase that high-need pool? Because right now, there's a, two pools of special education money. One is just your, your December count money. And then there's a second pool that covers some of the additional expenditures for high-needs students. And we know some of the high-needs students are the students who are using medical marijuana. And I don't think you'd want to specify students who take medical marijuana because that limits, that, that would create a burden on us for figuring out who would qualify. But saying within those high categories, can we require the, can we ask the legislature to agree to earmark that money to increase the reimbursement rate we get for that group of students? So I don't know what people's thoughts are. I know that Mr. Gardner had talked about the possibility of sponsoring something like that at some point. So that may be a, a way to collaborate. Thoughts?
Yeah, it would be worth a try. And I think there's some legislative, the people that I've talked to, I guess they call them legislatures, ministers. There, there's kind of a, there, there's not much money in that. I mean, it was kind of the farce of the marijuana legislation. There really isn't any money coming out of it. And, you know, the, the pool of money that goes into the best program, which improves rural school districts, maybe a third, a half, it would cost to build a new school. So at most, we're painting a few awnings or something, you know, with the, the money. So taking the idea and trying to figure out, getting that reapplied towards what, what marijuana, you know, what the marijuana legislation, the legalization has, has actually, how it has actually impacted our students. I don't know what the count was last year, but we had, how many students, Peter, do you remember, that were high-needs students that were here directly as a result of the medical marijuana?
I don't want to speak to a specific number, but it, it was a significant number.
But it, it did create a pinch in our budget and that was, that was a noticeable pinch in the budget. So, and, and so there is some recognition. I think it's something we could push forward. I'd actually recommend having a lobbyist look into it for us also, having our lobbyists look at it.
Don't they, according to the regulations, don't they have to use that money in specific areas of education?
Small percentage. So there was a portion of which had to be targeted to the best program. And the rest of it had vague enough language that they can dump it in the general fund and do whatever they'd like, essentially. And if you said, just put it into school funding, the amount of impact it would have would be very small. But if you say, we're going to increase the reimbursement pool for high-need special education, we know that that's a significant part of districts' budgets when they have that student population. And it can hit, rural districts will frequently bandwagon fairly quickly with us because one or two high-needs students in their district is enough to bust their entire budget. Because they're, you know, that, that's a huge, you know, 75,000, if they have one $75,000 student and their budget is $400,000, all of a sudden, they're firing people. You know, larger districts have a little bit more cushion, but usually also have a larger number, a larger population of high-needs students. But, you know, Casby is dominated by rural districts if we do one, one representative per district. So things where we can find partnerships with those rural districts can give us a really strong voice. But yeah, there's, that, that language was vague enough to give the legislature a lot of opportunity to use the money however they'd like, other than that small percentage designated to best. Yet then they could sell it perceptually as, hey, approve recreational marijuana and you'll have more education dollars, which it did not do, which is why we as a board passed something opposing that language at the time. So we know we want that one. And I'm kind of looking back at some of the others we've had in the past. I think probably we would get some traction again on the one for the federal piece. So we put a resolution forward last year that we got accepted that was for the federal. We have state issues and then we also have the federal lobbying group and lobbying the federal governments for compassionate exemption to the Drug-Free Schools Act. Now that our legislature has required every school district to follow our lead and adapt something that allows cannabinoids in schools for children who have medical needs, I think we can get everybody to agree on that again, to try and get the feds to say, yes, we'll, we'll take away this threat. So that's probably worth submitting that one again if everyone's in agreement. Okay. If we look at the next one, the technology one bombed miserably last time. And my guess is would probably not be worth trying to argue again. However, I do think the student count one might be. So we had submitted one about trying to do something other than a single count day. And again, rural districts tend to be in support of that because they have migrant, a lot of migrant students. So their numbers will shift. And I believe that one got put through without me having to argue last time. So.
What, each semester basically?
There's a couple of different ways to do it. And if we, if we make the language vague enough that they can, that people can have some more discussion around it, we're more likely to get it through. And then we can let our lobbyists work with the legislature to write language that we like and get Casby to support it. But there's a variety of options. One would be doing an average daily count. So taking your average student count, another would be, can we count twice a year? Can we, you know, there are some other ways of doing it, but at least having the conversation would be nice. Let's see. Their new approach probably isn't going to get us far on the regional building department one, I don't think. And then I know we had had some discussion about the concern about how they're now counting matriculation and in their school, in, when they're looking at our accreditation scores, right, Peter, for how they counted military service or how they're proposing to count military service. But I think that's complicated by the military's ability to report. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would recommend we go forward with a resolution there because I think there is some, for lack of a better word, there is some private conversation that's happening between the department and the State Board of Education to, they would like to not fight about that. And we would want to respect that and not put them in a position. I think, I think their interest is in honoring military service as a, as a successful path after high school. But right now, they don't have that in legislation. And so I think there's, there's a larger process that will happen behind the scenes.
Well, in my understanding and talking with our lobbyists was that the military had actually asked for the language to remove at the time because they weren't sure that they could provide the data the state was looking for. So the military was still trying to find a way to report, like the difference between having kids say, yes, we're going in, and then the actual completion of basic training and being enlisted in the military. There was some problem with the military's data system interacting with the state. And so the military recruiters, I thought, from Amy's perspective, had asked them to pull some of it out at the time as well. So we need them to kind of get.
You have more information than I do, but you're correct that the state student ID doesn't match up with the military assigned ID. And so it would, it would create a data privacy, data transparency question. I think there, there are other ways that school districts could connect with the military, but that's part of what's been worked out.
And our other ones were the alternative assessment piece. I don't know that we need them under the current piloting things that the state board is looking at or that the state's looking at, correct? An option for individual school districts to propose an alternative assessment system? And that's something that's going through piloting between the feds and the state now, correct? Or is that something we've completely ruled out thanks to?
Not completely ruled out. The state has formed about a 15-member committee. I don't think they've even named the committee, but it's the committee that's working on SAA implementation recommendations. And I'm not aware that anybody in the country knows what is allowed under, under SAA, under this new federal legislation. There are proposed rules at the Federal Department of Education, US Department of Education. They're not well-understood yet, and that's probably going to take another year, maybe two, before we really understand what we're obligated to do and what we're allowed to do. Right now, it's pretty fuzzy.
We also did have a general one on full reimbursement for special education costs, which we know is also a pipe dream. But I don't know if there is some value in having the target funding one and then a second one saying, continue to increase special education until full reimbursement occurs or something like that. I don't know if that gives the legislature another way to increase school funding that, that doesn't impact their budget quite as large per cycle, but still has an impact? And whether that's worth having that discussion this time or if that's worth saving for another year?
It is highly unlikely that an association of school boards is going to agree on something that's specific in the legislative cycle.
Yeah. Save it another year. We got them the last time, we got it in last time, but that was when they had like 200 different things, so.
Peter, you don't think any school boards could come together on one thing? What? And you're.
The biggest issue is the lack of education of, and understanding of how the funding system works with other boards. Educates us better than many. So it's fun to sit down and have people not exactly understand how their own budgets work in that area. Okay, so then we have three. We have targeting the funding of marijuana tax specifically to high-needs bed groups, continuing on the federal agenda to get the compassionate care exemption, and then looking at an alternative method for student count. But do you have anything else they'd like to add? Consider, have to submit these right after the work session, so I can make sure we have them drafted and you guys see them before Donna submits them for us. Good? All right. Now we're on to our evaluation process, which I also had to do. All right, so I didn't include a PowerPoint this time. The draft policy is there again, and I included this time a sampling of, I don't know how to advance this, a clicker, so we can see what we're talking about. Here's the policy that we've all read through. And then, yes, I will have Brad step up and say his legal review. I've gotten the email already. But this is the type of report we would receive. So this was an example based on the set of questions they had. Now, this is one that only had seven responders because this was a board only. And of course, we're looking at not only doing a self-evaluation, but doing an evaluation, a 360 component as well. But it would be something like this where you would have a statement and it would be a Likert scale. So you get strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree. And then a don't know can be as informative as those four because that lets you know whether it's standing out at all or if people don't even understand how that's a piece of the bowl. And so this was using something, this was sorting the questions, the work of school boards instead of Baldridge, but we would resort it using Baldridge. So this would be, okay, we take all of the questions from the survey that had to do with connecting with the community, and here's your feedback. Do you have a summary overall of that? But notice the statements don't name, don't specify individual board members because the purpose of this would be to evaluate us as a group, not as individuals, so that we can grow. We govern as a group, we act as a body, and so our evaluation would be as a body. And that should also temper some of the concern about individuals being targeted. Because even if we open it up and open comment area could be beneficial, what we can do is have the organization that does it, where any comment where individuals are named is automatically removed by them before we ever get a report. And that way, that information isn't something that becomes public, that, because that isn't what we're asking for. We're saying, board is a body, comment on the board as a body. If you comment, make individually specific comments, those comments would be eliminated. We're sanitized and they can come up with a paragraph saying, here's general feedback, so that we don't end up with name-calling nastiness. Because unlike those of you who get 360s in your own personal professional evaluations, those stay between you and your evaluator, this isn't between just us and our evaluator, this is then online in perpetuity. So someone does a little, you know, name search somewhere on me 50 years from now, and it's going to pop up if you decided to say all kinds of nasty things, which I won't care about, but maybe my grandkid will. So, you know, so those are some of the things to think about, or our children looking online. So here's, you know, so the board supports achievement related to activities in district buildings before and after the school day. These are just the types of statements. Yeah. See, yeah, so there was one that showed an example of sorting it like Baldridge, customer focus. It would group the questions for us and show it to us. This was an example of the subset of questions, because I am, we're going to, we're taking, we're stealing the questions from Missouri Association of School Boards. They're giving them to us. They've already done all the aligned work. And this was an example of someone who you could tell was a curriculum alignment person in her former life because she's aligned it to all of these different criteria and can show how the question is consistent. We will have them sorted by Baldridge because that's the tool we've decided to use, assuming we move forward with this. Brad, did you want to come up and make comment on legal review for us, just so everyone officially hears and then? Yeah.
Hi, Brad Miller, Board Counsel, Legal Counsel. I did take an opportunity to review this a week or two ago and the compliant with law, and it looks really good to me, by the way.
Thank you. So do we have any more questions before we move this forward for approval? To approve it, and then we'd start looking at a timeline. I was just going to have Donna kind of look at our board calendar and figure out what the right timeline would be to make sure that we weren't overloading us at the same, and at the same time, giving our employees the right feedback.
So let's move the policy forward as an action item.
Kevin, we all good? All right, so then let's move this forward for action at our next meeting. And we will make history as the first board willing to do a 360-degree evaluation.
And ending before eight o'clock.
And now may we have a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none of vote?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Libera Wright?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting adjourned at 7:51.